You're here for Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. Eric Costello, Councilman for the 11th District Chair of the Committee. Joined by members of the Committee, Councilwoman Danielle McCray, Second District. Councilman Chris Burnett, Eighth District. Councilman Robert Stokes, Twelfth District. Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, Sixth District. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Third District. As well as Councilwoman Oded Ramos, Fourteenth District. Joining us on behalf of the Administration, we have Nina F. Ellis, Deputy Director from Government Relations, representing Council President Nick Mosby for the hearing. We have Matt Stegman and Nikki Policy, Legislative Director. And then staff to the Committee is Margery Curran. I know that we have our City Administrative, or our Chief Administrative Officer here with us today. Our City Administrator, pardon me, Chris Shorter, C A O Shorter. And then we have Director Kearney from the Recovery Office. So with that, I am going to turn it over to the C A O and the Director to get things started. What we'll do in terms of flow today, we'll have a presentation from you all. We did share in advance some questions that the Committee would like to discuss. And we'll go through those as well as any other questions and then take it from there. C A O Shorter, floor is yours, sir.
Good morning, good morning. Chairman Costello, thank you very much for the introduction and for allowing us to you and your colleagues to be able to present today. I appreciate the opportunity always to be able to talk about the Administration's work in the road ahead. I'm very proud, I think it is safe to say, of the work that Director Kearney and the entire team in the Recovery Office is doing. We were Baltimore City, one of the first of our sister cities to establish a recovery office. And they have just done phenomenal work in a very short period of time. We're going to hear a presentation today of where things currently stand based on some of the questions that were sent in advance. Just want to again thank you and your colleagues. And I'd also like to just really take this opportunity to thank Director Kearney and really her entire, her entire team. A lot of work still ahead and certainly appreciate your and your colleagues' partnership as we go. Want to also acknowledge obviously the Mayor and his leadership in establishing this office so quickly. And the ability to be able to work with community and with city and elected officials to get this work done is absolutely phenomenal. So with that said, I want to turn it over to Director Kearney, allow her to go through the presentation and I will remain on the line and join her in answering any questions or providing additional information after her presentation is complete. So thank you again and Director Kearney, feel free to jump in now.
Director, hang on one second, C A O Shorter, thank you. Margery, if you could keep an eye out, I think Councilman Schleifer is having some trouble getting logged into the WebEx. Also, we've been joined by Councilwoman Flecia Porter from the Tenth District. Director Kearney, please take it away, floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, good morning, City Council members. And thank you for the opportunity to be able to present on the status of efforts in the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs as it pertains to the implementation of $641 billion in American Rescue Plan Act funding. I believe that one of my MOBRA colleagues was going to run the slide deck for me, I don't know. Okay, thanks so much Nina, I appreciate that. So I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to see the screen. If you can just give me a nod or a thumbs up. Yes, able to see the screen, the presentation, great, thank you very much. So I'd like to go ahead and move on to the next slide to give an overview of the breakdown of this presentation. It's basically in four parts. We'll first talk about the Treasury Final Rule and provide an overview of changes from the interim final rule. We'll also talk about the proposal status and funding commitments that have been made to date. I'll also provide an overview of the quarterly Treasury Report as well as provide information on our recently established dashboard. If we can move to the next slide, please. So starting off with the Treasury Final Rule, next slide. So as you all know, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law on March 11th, 2021. And the U.S. Department of Treasury established the state and local fiscal recovery funds, which provides millions of dollars to states and jurisdictions. We generally refer to that funding as ARPA as opposed to the S L F R F, but that is the technical term. And those funds are provided to states and localities to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Once the law was established, there was the interim final rule that the Treasury issued on May 17th, 2021, which provided some initial guidance on how funding could be used. After May 17th, 2021, we also received the first tranche of funding from the American Rescue Plan Act in May of '21 as well. So a final rule was issued nearly a year later, on January 6th, 2022, although we expected the final rule to be issued in the fall of 2021. So accordingly, the Administration committed funding only for uses that were specifically enumerated or outlined in the law or in the interim final rule and has been quite cautious not to make any additional commitments until the final rule was issued. Next slide. I want to briefly go over some of the key changes from the interim final rule to the final rule. I'll note that the final rule is 437 pages. It's a lot of information and we tried to boil that down into some information that is a little bit more palatable and easily understood. There are just a few things, I don't want to read the entire slide, but there are just a few things that I want to point out as a part of this slide and that are key. One of the changes was allowing revenue loss to be calculated by fiscal year over calendar year. On the interim rule, it was previously calendar year only. In addition, instead of calculating the revenue loss with a specific calculation that's provided by the Department of Treasury, Treasury is now allowing for individual, or individual cities and states to elect to take a general $10 billion general revenue loss. In addition, it extends eligibility to all beneficiaries of federal programs that's specifically noted in the guidance. There's also a new income subsidy requirement for broadband. And the final rule adds that requirement that recipients address the affordability needs of low-income consumers and accessing broadband either by requiring service providers that provide service to households to participate in the FCC's Affordable Connectivity Program or a broad-based affordability program with commensurate benefits. Treasury has identified that this requirement should increase the number of customers that are able to take advantage of broadband infrastructure funded by ARPA and thereby increasing the effectiveness of funds and connecting households and businesses to high-speed internet. Also, the final rule now requires that recipients provide a justification for any capital projects over $1 million. The guidance also outlines some specific information that has to be included in that guidance, I'm sorry, in that justification. And in addition to that requirement, there's also the requirement that any capital expenditures that are over $10 billion are reported in the quarterly reports that are submitted to Treasury. Next slide, please. Next slide. So I also wanted to discuss some of the impact of the final rule. As I mentioned before, the application portal opened up to our city agencies in the summer of '21, to our nonprofit entities in the fall of '21, and closed to our nonprofit entities December 31st, 2021, and will close to our city agencies and quasi-government agencies on March 31st, 2022. But what does the final rule mean for those proposals that have been submitted? As a result of the issuance of the final rule, the Recovery Office being prudent and cautious is reevaluating all proposals that were submitted to ensure that it is compliant with the final rule. We're carefully reviewing, we want to make sure that we are not allowing anything to be funded that the Treasury might determine to be ineligible and therefore the city would be responsible for repaying those funds back to the United States Department of Treasury for anything that's considered ineligible. We understand that there is a lot of interest and a lot of inquiry around the proposals and who will be awarded. But as we're reevaluating the proposals, it will take additional time and that will impact the timeline for notification of eligibility decisions to those entities that have submitted proposals. Next slide.
Director, can you, can you please go back and just run through those dates that you mentioned at the beginning of the last slide?
Sure, in reference to the application opening and closing.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, sure. So the application portal opened to city agencies in the summer of '21, roughly around the July, August timeframe. Opened to nonprofit organizations October 1st of 2021. Closed to nonprofit organizations on December 31st, 2021. And will close to government agencies and quasi-government agencies March 31st, 2022.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So in terms of next steps for our organizations, particularly around nonprofit proposals, our plan is to notify organizations of their eligibility by March of '22. So just in a few more weeks, we are going to develop a list of eligible proposals to share with the Mayor, the C A O, deputy mayors, and council. As you're aware, council has the opportunity to provide endorsements for projects. And so there was a request from a council member to provide all of the proposals that are eligible so that they can view all the proposals in one time as opposed to not having fully informed information when making endorsements. In addition, we'll reach out to eligible applicants to complete an application. And what that means is go over a detailed budget, an implementation plan, a risk assessment, and some other documentation in order to formulate a complete application. And then share that information with senior leadership as well. And then we'll have applicants that coordinate with our advisors to complete their application. All of that will happen in the March timeframe and obtain funding decisions from senior leadership. And that will happen on a rolling basis. The reason why it would happen on a rolling basis is because organizations may take some time to provide the necessary documentation to complete an application. So all of that would be completely contingent upon the ability for the organizations to provide information in a timely fashion. So I also wanted to go over our funding commitments to date. One second. Nina, is this the same version that was sent to council? Because this is a little bit out of order.
Yes, this is the same version that I received from you this morning.
Okay, this is a little bit out of order, so apologies. But so talking about funding commitments, as you are aware, there have been a number of commitments that have been made to date. This is just a recap of those funding commitments. So $80 billion for the COVID-19 health response. Also, $25 billion for our Economic Recovery Fund. $6 million for broadband and digital equity, that's just for Phase 1. The complete amount for broadband is $35 million. Next slide. Also, reducing Baltimore violence is $50 billion. That is, of course, to MONZI. Our workforce development to Moet is a $30 million commitment. And then we have the ARPA Administration, our office for 10.6. And then also ARPA Project and Evaluation Services. Again, that refers to our partnerships with the University of Baltimore as well as Morgan State. Next slide. So this slide just shows the project approval days for each one of those commitments with the exception of the ARPA Administration for the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. It's important to note here that we first, our first project went before B O E on November 17th of '21. The last one of those projects, December 22nd, 2021. That was just an approval of the grant agreement signed with those organizations. But there is still yet another step that we must take in terms of actually transferring funds to those organizations that also require additional B O E approval. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. So in terms of the Treasury Report, the Treasury Report covered the period of performance of March 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. As such, any expenditures that may have hit any of our accounts since December 31st, 2021 would not be reflected in this data. So what we report to Treasury are obligations of $71 billion or $71.2 billion and also expenditures of $12.8 billion. What's important to note here is that there's a difference in commitments from obligations. The Treasury Department does not identify commitments, which is what I showed on the last slide, which is the total amount of money that we've committed to organizations or city agencies for specific types of projects. What Treasury cares about are obligations. And so our obligations are considered the amounts that are in the grant agreement with the agency or organization, but as designated per fiscal year. The grant agreements identify a specific amount that we provide on a tenant, agency, or organization for a certain number of fiscal years between FY '22 and FY '25. Baltimore City considers obligations to be the amount that's appropriated for each fiscal year. So again, giving an example of MONZI who received $50 million. Our Budget Department does not consider $50 million to be the obligation. They consider the amount that we moved over to the agency in FY '22 or FY '23 to be the obligation. It's not the full $50 million that went before the B O E for approval. In terms of expenditures for Treasury reporting purposes, ARPA funding announcements were divided into 19 projects. And that's based on the items that were included in the budget in the grant agreements. Again, there's a very technical way that we have to report to Treasury. That information is divided into expenditure categories. That is pretty technical and doesn't necessarily resonate well when you're messaging. And so we had to divide that into the different 19 projects as opposed to the five that you consistently hear us talk about in terms of overall investments. Of the 19 projects, there are four that have expended funds as of January 31st, 2021. Next slide, please. This slide provides an overview of the Treasury obligations and expenditures that were reported as of December 31st, 2022. I'll note again that many of our projects did not go before B O E until the November, December timeframe. So the ability for agencies to be able to spend or stand up their programs could not happen until we received that approval. So many of our city agencies are still in the process of doing such that we only have expenditures against these four. I'll also note that of those four, we have funding that was made available to the Baltimore Civic Fund, which is specific to providing economic relief to nonprofit organizations, to the Baltimore Development Corporation, who's assisting us with small business assistance and providing technical assistance to small businesses. The $2 billion to the Family League that is specifically for childcare entities. And then also for ARPA Administration, which is specifically around salaries and any funds that were paid to consultants who are assisting us in the review of applications and also working with our city agencies and ultimately our nonprofits around their proposals and applications. Next slide. So also, there's been questions about a dashboard. I'm pleased to announce that the Recovery Office stood up the ARPA Data Dashboard yesterday. We provide that information to council members and also in the press release. The dashboard provides information on proposals by eligibility. So whether it was eligible or not by entity, whether it was a nonprofit or a city agency by topic. And we'll talk about that a little bit. As I mentioned, we had to break that, our information down into topics as opposed to when the larger investments, as we announced. So we provided information in that way as well. We also have the commitments and expenditures tab, which provides funding committed to date. It also includes expenditures as of January 31st, 2022, and then funding commitments by topic. Eventually, we will get to the point where we have project performance data and that will include performance measures that we included as a part of our grant agreements with our agencies to make sure that we are carefully tracking the performance and progress on ARPA-funded projects. Next slide, please. This slide just provides some screenshots from our dashboard in the event that you haven't had an opportunity to review it yet. This particular screenshot comes from our funding and commitments, I'm sorry, our proposal page, which shows information on the number of proposals by Mayor O'Piller, for example. We also have a donor chart that provides information on the proportion of ARPA funding for these specific categories or topics as it relates to the complete $641 billion that the city received. Next slide, please. Also, this dashboard screenshot shows how we have aggregated information by topics. Again, one of the things that we've talked about consistently is that for the public to understand what we're doing, saying that $50 million was awarded to MONZI is not the same as saying $20 million was spent on violence prevention or $10 million was spent on reentry services. So this is our way of providing more user-friendly and understandable information about ARPA investments divided into these different topics. If you go to the dashboard and click one of the icons, the screenshot to the right will show you the information that is provided to you when you do such. It will show you how much has been spent to date. If any funds have been spent, it will show you the amount that has been committed. It will also show you information on what the commitment description is as well as information on which agency received it and the amount that was committed. So we're really proud of the information that's been shared in the dashboard and really think that it's a useful tool to help people understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. In addition to that, we also included a tab for what I'll call a methodology or crosswalk document, which also provides information for how we categorize information and how we broke down the expenditure categories and categorized that information into these topic areas. That is the end of the formal presentation. I'm happy to take questions from the council at this time.
Director, thank you so much for all of your hard work and bringing some J A O flavor to the oversight of these funds, really appreciate it. I wanted to jump back to Nina or Sophia, I'm not sure who was managing the presentation. If you could please pop that back up. Can you jump back to Slide 9, please? It's fast, thank you. Bullet number four, applicants coordinate with advisors to complete application. Can you explain that to me? I'm not sure I understand who the advisors are.
Sure, so we are working with our consultants to help work with our applicants on developing complete applications. So at the proposal process, we get a high-level overview of what the entity wants to do, how much money they're requesting, what Mayor O'Piller aligns with. And then we go back and assign an expenditure category. From that point, applicants would then work with our application advisors, which again are our consultants, and they will develop a more detailed budget. So for example, in proposals, we might just have a very high-level overview budget. I would like to request $5 million. 2.5 will go towards staffing, 2.5 will go towards programming. Our application advisors will work with the applicants to understand how many people does, how many staff are we talking about? What types of staff, what will they be doing? For your programming, what types of programs will you be providing, things of that nature? They will also work with the applicant to complete a risk assessment, which gives us an indication of the financial status and management stature of that organization and also what we call our implementation plan. So if you're asking for $5 million over one fiscal year, how much programming are you providing in that year? Or if you're asking for $5 million over three fiscal years, what will you realistically be able to accomplish each fiscal year? So they work with the applicants to get that kind of information.
Got it, that's really helpful. And these are for proposals from nonprofits, or rather not. Yeah, these are, these are for proposals that have made it past round one. Round one being just determining eligibility, not determining the merit or quality of the application. It just, is it consistent with the Treasury Final Rule, is it eligible?
That is correct.
Got it, got it, okay, very helpful, thank you. Um, can we go to, I'm just going to ask you to go slowly, 10, 11, 12, 13 in the slide number, slow, next? Yes, pause right there. Um, revenue stabilization, we had talked about somewhere in the neighborhood of $100 to $130 million going to revenue stabilization. Specifically, one way to think about that is essentially an assignment and fund balance or, you know, every year I put aside money in my secondary savings account to purchase Christmas presents for my family. I know that expenditure is coming, I start to plan for that early. That money's kind of fungible and I may take money out of it, I may add more money to it. Where's the, I know that, well, revenue stabilization, $130 million. What's the plan and where is that accounted for, please and thank you?
Sure, so it's not included here because it's not something to an agency. We really have talked about revenue loss as something that is not a project per se. The plan for that is still to be determined. We did go through the general revenue loss calculation that we provide to Treasury. We're also required to do that revenue loss calculation every fiscal year. So the $130 million is an estimate that was developed by the Budget Department. I don't know if Mara or if there's someone else on finance that wants to speak to the calculations or to the general revenue loss calculation at all. But essentially, that is the calculation that we followed that is specific from Treasury. And then we identified how much our revenue loss was and we will have to do so each fiscal year. Now, the ability to, we can use that for revenue loss. There's a couple of different things that can be used for, which includes city services. But there's still a conversation about how those funds will be used, especially because right now the economy is still a little bit in flux. And so we're really trying to be very cautious, especially our Budget Director on kind of underestimating how much money we might actually need and how that funding will be used.
I don't think our Budget Director has ever been accused of being overly cautious, nonetheless, tough crowd. The, you mentioned estimates for revenue loss. What does the final rule allow for in terms of what fiscal years that can be applied to? Is that just starting for fiscal year '22?
No, since the pandemic onset was February of '20, you're allowed to develop your base year. So basically, what were your revenues before the pandemic actually hits? So for us, that would be fiscal year '19. Then you're able to calculate revenue loss every year, starting from fiscal year '20.
Director, you said fiscal year '19?
For the base year. So when you're talking about revenue loss, the Treasury wants to know how much money you collected in an average year when nothing was going on, when there was no pandemic, there was no challenge on the economy. So FY '19 is our base year that we didn't compare our revenue loss to. So FY '20.
The pandemic started in March of '20, so that's fiscal, okay, okay, that's, yep, sorry. Um. Okay. So what, yes, Director, let's jump over to BBMR. So what was that estimate, what was the final number for fiscal year '20? Assuming that would just be about one-third of the year, March through June.
So for fiscal year '20, the revenue loss estimate was $93.6 million. But again, just to reiterate that we are to make that calculation every fiscal year so that does not include FY '21. And certainly, we're in the midst of '22 right now, so it doesn't include that. And so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was, I was very interested, thank you for that context, it's very helpful. I was very interested in the number for fiscal year '20. Because at the, in the, in the spring of '20, leading up to budget hearings, that number sounds consistent. We were told at the time that it was around $103 million. But Mara, Pedro, can you chime in on that? But um Mara, Pedro, can you, can you chime in on that? Does that sound accurate? A hundred and three point five million was our projected shortfall.
That's how much we wrote down the budget from prelim to exec sum.
So can you, can you walk me through at a very high level? I don't need you to go into too much detail. How we got from a hundred and three million to to around ninety-three million? Or how that estimate came down for for revenue loss? I'm just curious.
So. Go ahead, Mara, fine, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I believe the number that Director Kearney is referencing might be the number that was submitted to the treasury.
That's correct. So.
Go ahead, Pedro.
Yeah, so there's a a formula that was, it was um um estimated to what they're uh comparing the actual revenue two thousand and nineteen and what the 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 ca- calculation we use, we should have received in two thousand and twenty based on the eh estimated growth. And when we apply that estimated growth and compare to the actual uh revenue that the city receives, is that, that's what explained the difference on on ninety, ninety million dollars that uh the director is referencing. So what we put in budget, we estimated that amount to be the deficit of what we lost in revenue, but that eh information that the director is is given is based on the formula that was given to us in order to estimate the the deficit. Oh, the revenue loss.
I don't have an issue with you overestimate the loss. I think that's a a conservative and responsible approach. I I guess I'm not sure that that fully answers the question, though. What the the director, it sounds like she's saying that we um, reported revenue loss of ninety-three point six million. Your office at the time had estimated it to be a hundred and three point five million. And I, maybe you did explain it, Pedro, so I apologize if so. You're saying that that ten million dollar delta was just your office overestimating that loss because you took into consideration potential growth? Whereas the director, when she submits it to treasury, she's just gonna look at what the specific loss is, not projecting things like potential growth. Is that correct?
The the ninety-three million dollars is based on the rules, though, that we are applying. Uh, they they are already set up after uh what the growth should have been without the pandemic. So we took two thousand and eighteen. The growth should have been five point two percent. When they apply their growth, we get to a certain number, and now we compare that number to the actual revenue that we receive in the city. That is where the difference is, is based on the growth that they pre-established as what we should been, we should have been in two thousand and twenty, or growth was different. The actual, the actual number. That's where we, when we talk about the one hundred million dollars when we ended the fiscal two thousand and twenty, it was based on the records that we have, eh, how we started the fiscal year and where we ended compared to budget. This is in order to eh this, this ninety-three million dollars is specifically a comparison between where we ended and what the the formula established as a growth. I don't know if I explained properly, but this is, we are following destruction. It's five point two percent, that five point two generated a difference between where we ended and where we should have been of ninety-three million dollars.
So I I think I said it backwards, and I I think you may have underst- or you may have explained it correctly. Let me summarize or try to summarize. What the director submitted, what the director's team submitted to treasury, the ninety-three point six million, that reflects the um, the gap in revenue with with projected growth taken into consideration after the fact. What you reported at the time was just what the gap in revenue was, but, okay, I I fully understand.
That's correct.
Very helpful. And Director, that that sounds consistent with with your understanding, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Pedro. Couldn't have done that myself, thank you.
Uh. Let's go back to uh can we go back to the the schedule slide? It was somewhere before slide nine. I forgot to write the number down. Uh, the one that includes March thirty-first of, sorry, March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, that's the close for government and quasi-government applications. It may not have been in the slide, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a slide. I I voiced that over.
No, that's fine, thank you. Um. Okay, so I just want to summarize to make sure I understand the application period for nonprofits, that would be anyone who is not a city agency or a quasi-governmental agency, was December thirty-first. Those are closed, correct?
That's correct.
Um, you had mentioned on slide nine that applicants are coordinating with their advisor to complete, complete their applications. I assume that that process is is now completed because the nonprofit period for applying has closed, is that correct?
That is not correct. So as I mentioned in the the first bullet, that we have to notify the applicants of their eligibility determination. We first needed to close the applicant portal uh to make sure that we had uh all of the proposals that were in from nonprofit organizations. Again, there was a request from council um that we provide a complete list of applications um so that endorsements could be appropriately used and everyone could have an informed decision as they were using their council endorsements. Then the final rule came on January the sixth. So then we had to reevaluate all of the applications to ensure that they aligned with the updated rule. So in the, in March, we will begin to notify all of our nonprofits about their eligibility determination, and at that point, um, we will share the, again, the list with council as well as with the mayor, deputy mayor, and C A O. Uh, and then we will move uh organizations to the application phase, at which point they will begin to work with the advisors. All of that will happen in March.
Let me uh summarize to make sure I got it correctly. So the deadline was December thirty-first. So a a pool of X number of nonprofit applications from across the city had come in between October first and December thirty-first. Then uh, a week later, treasury issued the final rule. So at that point, you pivoted, your office had to go back and re-review uh the uh eligibility of those X number of applications that came in between October one and December thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-one. Your office is now in the process of re-reviewing uh the eligibility for those X number of applications. And then by March, you expect to have a determination on that re-review of X number of applications, and that may dwindle the number down by some arbitrary number, let's say five percent, down to Y number of applications. At that point, you will take the Y number of applications and the advisors that you are working with will assist the Y number of uh applicants with refining their application in order to make it through phase two, is that correct?
So um Chairman, I think I messed up in in the use of terminology. I should have used the term proposal, which we've talked about as that initial stage of eligibility. We went back and reviewed all of the proposals um to make sure that it aligned with the law. We don't consider a proposal an application until we get all the supplemental documentation when they work with our application advisors. So it was my mistake to use the term application. I hope that didn't confuse you further, but um.
It did, but you brought it back. I think I'm, I think I'm good now. So th- there's always been a two-step process for nonprofit applications. The first is to determine the eligibility. Um. Let me take a step back. There's always been a two-step process for ideas from nonprofits for how to spend money. Uh, the first is determining the eligibility, and that applies to proposals. The second is um refining the the application itself, which includes details and context and background and and MOUs and all kinds of good stuff like that. That is, that is when we're referring to it as an applicant. So, so, okay, so from October one through December thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-one, we received X number of proposals from nonprofits throughout the city.
That is correct, sir.
And then on January sixth, um, you all made a determination that you need to go back and re-review the eligibility of these proposals, right?
That is correct.
You expect to have that completed by March thirty-one, plus or minus?
Yes, that is correct.
And then, and then you will have theoretically dwindled that number down to Y number of proposals, at which point um, uh, you, your, your team of eh advisors will work with the applicants, not just on their proposal, but what will now be their applications that will be submitted uh for a a decision from the city as to whether or not to fund them or as to how much to fund them.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and then um so proposal, okay, I, I, I think I got it. That's, that's helpful. Uh, and then can we go to uh page fourteen? Okay, so we had sent over a list of uh questions uh that that the committee wanted to discuss. If you're looking back in retrospect, I used the wrong terminology. There's really three categories of funds here, and and I kind of completed two of them. There's announcements, right, like the the mayor's op or the mayor slash your office slash C A O made an announcement that X million of dollars is going to this thing. Then there are actual um obligations. That is where um, the way you are defining that is where money is transferred from treasury as in in Baltimore City Treasury to an agency. Um, and then there is expenditure when the agency says I'm gonna spend X hundred of thousands of dollars on executing this contract. Is that, did I broadly describe the three categories?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so I think um so I think moving forward um, to help us better understand where things are at, and and I can send, I can can resend that email to revise the the incorrect terminology I used. We probably want to split it into three categories, announcements, obligations, and expenditures. I was, I was um accidentally combining um announcements and obligations under the assumption, the false assumption that um once an announcement was made that Baltimore City Treasury was um transferring funds to those appropriate um agencies and agency codes, but that's, that's not necessarily the case, correct?
Well, it is the case, but it's not at the full amounts that were announced. So for example, um, again, just using Monzi, the commitment or the announcement was for fifty million dollars. That fifty million dollars is over a number of fiscal years. Um, our budget department considers an obligation to be the budget amount for the fiscal year. So just to be in round numbers, let's say that for fiscal year twenty-two, Monzi requested fifteen million dollars. We would then transfer fifteen billion dollars over to their account to be able to use in that fiscal year. And then they're able to spend against that amount, which becomes an expenditure. The next fiscal year, um, if their budget, how much their budget identified, we would transfer that amount over to their account. So let's just say it's twenty million dollars. They would have twenty million dollars available to spend against in FY twenty-three. That would be considered an obligation um per the treasury.
So let's use Monzi as an example. Uh, so there was um, step one, there was an announcement made, the mayor's office made this announcement, we're gonna we're gonna use fifty billion dollars to deal with X, Y, and Z, and and Monzi's gonna take the lead on that. Um, the announcement, not that I would expect it to break this down for the general public, because this is getting too much into the weeds and confusing people. But that's a multi-year announcement, or that announcement covers a multi-year commitment, if you will. Um. Where is the uh, or or can, can you show me the breakdown of of that multi-year commitment, how that tracks per year?
The budget is available as a part of the B O E package, so I'll, we submit the budget as a part of the grant agreement when we go before B O E. So that is, yes, it is available.
Okay, um, hang on one. So. Okay, so an announcement is made, and then a a package is prepared for review by B O E. And then this is where I'm gonna loop in, um, I wanna loop in Mara uh and Pedro um, and and Nina, and I think C A O, shorter reprivates conversation over email, but announcement is made, goes to, a package is created for board of estimates for their review and subsequent approval. Um, some of those things may come to the city council in terms of a supplementary uh uh appropriation um or transfer. Some may not, depending on where those things kind of fall within the organizational bureaucracy, right? And and I guess that question isn't necessarily for you, Director, but feel free to chime in, but that's really geared toward BBMR.
Yeah, let me, if I can.
Yes, sir.
For record, Chris Shorters, city minister. Um, w- we are actually, this is a a great question, Chairman. We are actually having an internal discussion right now about uh the sort of regulatory framework, if you will, for uh moving these dollars. Uh, what I mean by that is, as part of the uh, as part of the budget development process last year, uh, we went through and made sure that the, that the entire ARPA package was included as part of um city councils moving the budget. Uh, and what we need to now understand from law and from BBMR, and we are having that discussion, I believe, this week. And we'll be able to provide a a readout of that discussion uh soon after. We're gonna talk about what now needs to be done to make sure that we are moving uh the funds in a way that is in line with Baltimore City uh code and ensures that you all have good line of sight uh in in and and oversight of the of the funds as well. So I'm not sure that we are in a position today, um, either of us, to answer the specifics of the question that you're asking. Uh, um, you know, so I don't, you know, I don't want to stop any from, anyone else from providing uh some, you know, some some response as well, but I, I do know that that is a more strict, it is a conversation we're having internally, and I want to make sure we're in alignment, if you will. Uh, and and we'll provide a response soon after we we get there.
I, no, actually, I think you you did answer the the question. It's very helpful. Um. So let me just run back my my general understanding, just to make sure I'm I understand it as you all understand it, and that, and then I have a an additional ask related to to the information you just shared, Mr. C A O. Um. Okay, so um for government and quasi-government, um, the 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 part that the council will see first and the part that the public will see first is this announcement. Um, and these announcements may be multi-year announcements. Um, the next step is the eh administration prepares a package for the board of estimates. Um, and that goes to the board of estimates, and that would likely, not absolutely, but likely outline kind of which bucket of funding and which function fits within which fiscal year for actual expenditure. Um, you all are having a a conversation in the coming week or two to kind of uh refine that and maybe uh um I don't want to say have policy, but but um to to kind of lay out the details of what that looks like, right? Including the piece around the the supplementary appropriations that will end up coming to the council. Let me pause there and and ask if I got that right.
The one, uh, the one, one thing I would add to to that is the items that are generally going to the board of estimates are ready for expenditure. Um, so we are, at that point, an agency has received their appropriation for for uh for the year. They have worked through the procurement process and are now approaching the board of estimates for authorization to spend. Um, and and so I want to make sure that there, because there are a few things that happen. Um, and and so I wanna make sure that there, because there are a few things that happen between announcement. A very public announcement that the mayor makes um signaling the administration's um intent. To invest strategically, let's say in violence prevention, or invest strategically in broadband and digital equity. Uh, once that multimillion dollar commitment is made. The agency then uh is empowered to work with community partners or work with other government agencies. But to put forward uh a a, an actual item that's ready for us to spend. Resources on. In order to do that, we need to go to the Board of Estimates. Uh that item usually goes through eight, the procurement process. If it requires an R I P, a co- of some competition. In some cases, it does not. The Board of Estimates will then approve that spending. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that that I did not leave uh leave that part of this out.
No, that that's helpful. Um. So using the, going back to the Monty example, so there was an announcement made. Uh like two or three months ago, uh a fifty million dollar announcement or commitment. Uh then we heard from the administration. Um, maybe like two or three weeks ago and there was a breakdown. A a further, the the initial announcement had a general breakdown, then the most recent announcement. Uh included a more detailed breakdown with specific amounts going to specific organizations, correct?
That's correct.
Um, let me ask this, has? Just in the Monty example, has that one specifically gone to B O E? Yep.
Has what part of it gone to B O E?
Great, thank you. Great clarification. Uh, let me re-ask the question. What part of that has gone to B O A to date?
So we have um the initial grant agreement after fifty million dollars went before the B O E. Um, I might need finances help here, but there was also a second B O E approval of the money for F Y twenty-two. Um, for the for Monty to be able to use. So our understanding is the grant agreement has to be approved and then we have to have a secondary approval just to transfer money for the fiscal year. The funding for that fiscal year to the agency.
Uh Nina or or Marguerite, can you please take the presentation down? Thank you. I'm spending too much time squinting, trying to see people's faces. I appreciate it. Must be my old age. Um. Okay, uh Director, that's helpful. Let me make sure I understand. Uh, so fifty million dollar announcement. That whole thing went to B O E. However, portions of that package are going to have to go back to B O E again. Is that correct?
Yes, the entire amount of funding for that fiscal year. If you're asking if the funding that Monzi plans on providing to individual C B Os. Has gone to be, excuse me, to B O E, that has not happened yet.
Okay, so the, oh, go ahead.
I I was just gonna say so, um I I'm glad that we're having this conversation because. Um, there's a lot of bureaucracy in the movement of money and we have a very short time to be able to both award and spend. Um, so I am hopeful that we are able to figure out some streamlined approaches. Um to moving money because it seems challenging at best for an organization's um commitment. Have to go before B O E three times, right? So the individual um. Agreements that a agency makes with a C B O will have to go before the B O E. Um, the amount of money that we transfer to an agency for one fiscal year will have to go before the B O E. And then the entire commitment, however, the multi-year commitment is also has to go before the B O E.
I understand the first two. Um, why does the? Why does the third piece, the entire announcement, have to go to B O E if the entire announcement is not ready to be expended? For example, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna generalize the Monty commitment of fifty million dollars. So none of this is fact beyond the fifty million. There's a fifty million dollar announcement made by the administration for Monty. And let's say fifteen million of that is going to get spent this year. Um, that needs, that fifteen million needs to go to Monty. There may be agreements associated with that, for example. Uh, Monty had a, uh, there was a piece in there that I think was twelve point three million in partnering with the Department of Corrections at at the state of Maryland level. Right? What's just, whether that's true or not. Monty has a twelve million dollar agreement, let's say, with another uh government agency that's outside the city of Baltimore and it's not quasi, it's a state agency. There's some type of M O U that or other agreement that um outlines the parameters of of that relationship. And the spend of those dollars. Obviously, that agreement needs to go to B O E to be certified. I guess my question is, and I don't know this is so much for you, Directors, this might be for B B M R or really for Department of Law. Why does that general fifty million dollar announcement need to go to B O E? Is that a, is that a necessary bureaucratic action that has to take place? Are we required by charter or city code to do that?
So I, let me say, uh Chairman, so this is, this is, this is exactly the question that we need to answer internally. I am not completely sure that it does. Uh, we have done our very best as Director Kearney is. As articulated, we've done our very best based on what we know and what we've been told to adhere to city code. So and we will continue to do that, but we do need to internally uh work with law to make sure that we are. Uh that we are adhering to the letter of the law uh in terms of what is required and what is not. So the the answer to the question of whether we need to go to the Board of Estimates, which is essentially the city's spending board. Uh to to get authorization for a policy decision. I am not completely sure about and wanna reserve, if you will, reserve the right to come back to you with a more thoughtful. Um, and agreed upon response based on what city code tells us.
No, I, thank you. I appreciate you guys, Aaron, on the side of caution at at the beginning and I'm glad to hear that you're. You have that same question that I do because that didn't make a hundred percent sense to me. So, so. At the next quarterly hearing, um the administration will be prepared to definitive definitively answer that question. And kind of put that to rest. Um, and and what I would ask is um in between now and then, once you come to a determination. If you could send um something to me that I can disseminate to the Council President's Office and the Committee, that would be very helpful. Um, I I think, okay. Um, I do wanna come back to Monty. I I recognize that I violated my own rule of two questions per council member. So I'm gonna go to my other colleagues um first. Um, I I wanna come back to Monty and jump in a little more detail, but I do have one final general question. Um. Uh Director, there there was um. In in the final rule, you had mentioned something early in the presentation, maybe around slides four or five around premium pay. Can you, can you talk through that? There was, there was a a determination made in the final rule on that. What what does that, what does that say? What does that look like?
Um, at a high level, it just broadened the eligibility for certain uh categories of workers to receive premium pay. I'm I'm not able to enumerate those off the top of my head, but that's basically the, at the high level. It was just, it brought in eligibility for who could receive premium pay.
Do do we know if that is um? That includes back premium pay or is that premium pay moving forward or unclear at this point?
Um, unclear at this point.
Okay. Yep, if you could, if you could um find an answer to that and there's, there's. I don't know if there's a rush on that one, but just be prepared to discuss that at the next hearing. That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Okay, uh colleagues, my sincere apologies. I appreciate you all humoring me. Um, I know that um Councilman Schleifer has his hand up. Uh then we are going to go to. Well, well, Councilman Schleifer, you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question, Director, is. Does does money that goes through different agencies, like we'll use the Monty example, the, when they get fifty million dollars. And they allocate money to other um other nonprofits and other groups outside of the nonprofit grants. That that you guys are gonna be issuing. Do they, are those individual groups, are they bound by the same rules that you outlined? How, you know, there's over a hundred pages of of rules. Are are those organizations, do they have to abide by every single one of those rules? As well?
Absolutely. Um, the the or the city agencies are um sub-granties, if you will. Of the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs, we're considered the grantee um in terms of treasury. And so any organizations that have received funds are gonna have to abide by the same rules that the grantee does, and that's us. Um, we have to be able to report to treasury based on all of the guidance they've identified. And so, yes, we will expect for those organizations to provide information to us to be able to report accurately to treasury.
And so do all of those groups have to be registered nonprofits?
Yes, five oh one C threes.
Gotcha, and they all have to be in good standing?
That's correct.
Uh, and if they're not, does the city have to reimburse the federal government for that or or take the loss?
Well, it would be my hope that we would not grant funding to anyone that we haven't established that they are um five oh one C threes. Um, and in good standing. Um, but should that occur, uh I'm not certain that we would have to repay the federal government. As long as it is an eligible use of funds, but that's probably something that I need to speak more um with law about before I could apply definitively.
Gotcha. So can you just elaborate on why there would be an external fund offered to, you know, an another channel? For those nonprofits to go through that process, which seems to be a quicker moving and and more streamlined process. Because some of that money's already been awarded versus just following the same process that every other nonprofit's been asked to follow.
I need more specifics on what you're referring to.
So Monty already, Monty already awarded, um, what was it, close to twenty million dollars worth of of grants? Is that correct? Seventeen million, something like that?
I think that's right. Let me check real quick. I don't have a total in front of me, but I, oh, yes, about seventeen billion dollars. Um, now they've announced awards. That doesn't mean that there's dollars in hand.
Sure, so and how much have you guys announced of the nonprofit grants?
Um, other than what we have provided to the Baltimore Civic Fund, we have not awarded any funding to nonprofits who directly apply to us. And I've explained why earlier. Um, in terms of the the final rule and also because of the request from council to be able to provide all of the proposals at one time. To be able to appropriately are uh making informed decisions about how to use their endorsements.
Sure, so so I guess that 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 is um, my question is, so on one hand. Um, you know, there's seventeen million dollars awarded through one of the city agencies towards uh nonprofit grants from this funding. Um, and then you guys obviously going through hundreds of applications on your end. Um, and so why wouldn't those non, those seventeen million dollars worth of uh nonprofits? Uh, just go through the same process that that you guys are doing uh for the rest of the nonprofits?
I don't understand your question. Monzi has their own program design and they have directly awarded funding to organizations that support their mission. We have more general projects that have been provided to um the Mayor's Office of Recovery that have been proposed by nonprofit organizations. So when you said that the process is different, um they serve different purposes. Uh, there are some direct things that Monzi was looking for support on. They know who those organizations are. Uh, and they went through uh a review process as well.
So, so you're saying, so none of the awards that are gonna be issued from uh the remaining, from the grants that that your office is reviewing. None of those rewards are gonna be under um topics that Monty covers?
I'm not saying that.
Okay, so I guess that's where my confusion is. So if some of that money is going to be. Uh issued to organizations and such that fit under the purview of what Monty provides. Why would there be a separate grant issue issuance through Monty as opposed to just having? You know, those nonprofits that got that seventeen million dollars, why not just have them apply directly through you guys? And have Monty, you know, weigh in and say, okay, we're endorsing these. These are the the entities that fit into uh into our mission.
So they could have applied to us. They're not precluded from um applying to Monzi or directly to uh the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. Um, and in some cases, we've referred nonprofit applicants that fit better under the purview of Monzi. Um, to the organization for them to see if there's a match. Sometimes there is and sometimes there isn't. Um, but violence prevention is one of the expenditure categories of one of the enumerated uses that are identified in the law.
Yeah, I fully support that. I mean, I'm I'm on board with that. My, I guess my question is why? What's the difference between an organization applying to you or an organization applying to them? Why is there two separate channels? If we, if we have this great streamlined approach, you guys have a great process in place. You're doing scoring, you you have people who are working on reviewing the applications and so why would we have a separate channel? I guess that's where my confusion comes in and it might be something obvious. I'm just missing it.
I'm sorry, C A O Shorter, are you trying to jump in?
Yes, but wanna make sure that I'm recognized.
The chair is gone, Sue. Just go ahead.
Okay, so I think I understand the question, but please do jump in if I if I don't, uh Councilman. Um, there was a threshold of two hundred and fifty thousand for nonprofits to apply directly to our, to our government. And so uh our Office of Recovery Program, Director Kearney, is evaluating proposals from nonprofits. And community-based organizations that are requesting two hundred and fifty thousand and above. Uh, what we have not drawn that same distinction for nonprofits and community organizations to work with agencies who have received an appropriation. So agencies that may have smaller capacity, that may not be at a point where they can. They can spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but may be an effective community-based organization or nonprofit. Who can do work on behalf of our government with community. Uh, they are, if you will, working with. Uh, our agencies uh on smaller commitments. Uh, Director Kearney, you feel free to jump in to add more meat to that. Um, but if that's your question, Councilman, I I think that's not, that's the response.
That that certainly makes uh that that clarifies a little bit. Um, and and certainly I, you know, I'm supportive of that and. You know, I could see that across the board, whether it's public safety or recreation. There's a lot of great organizations that are doing work on the ground. That could really benefit from twenty thousand dollars that, you're right, wouldn't have the capacity to properly manage two hundred and fifty thousand. So w- why wouldn't that threshold then be for Monty to to only issue grants that are below? Um, two hundred and fifty thousand and then anybody who says, hey, we we need more than two hu- we need two fifty or more. Okay, that goes into the next, uh, the next process, uh, which goes through uh Director Kearney's organization.
To me, was all contingent upon program design. When we designed this program at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it was also for resources. Um, we don't have the capacity to monitor um a lot of smaller um awards under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we also thought that that was an appropriate threshold um to make sure that we got reputable organizations who were able to provide the kind of programs and services that we need. Um, the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs is brand new. We don't have the same relationships with organizations. And so uh Monzi, for example, and Director Jackson, if you're listening, apologies that um it seems like you're being picked on today. Um, but uh an organization like Monzi is going to understand the capacity that some of these smaller organizations have in a way that the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs would not. Um, so we rely on their subject matter expertise, their relationships, their boots on the ground to be able to understand more about capacity and the ability to be able to manage. Um, those smaller grants. Again, we we know that there are a lot of organizations out there who are doing great work, who may not have the capacity to be able to manage. Amounts of two fifty or more. So we wanted to create opportunities at the agency level so that everyone has an opportunity to participate in the city's recovery.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna leave it alone. I'll I'll just close out with, you know, I'm, I I guess I'm a little concerned that. If we have two different streams of of this going and we're not picking on any specific organization, that just happens to be. One that has already issued money. If the Health Department issued grants through money they received, it would be the exact same question. And so um uh C A O Shorter gave a a great answer, which which definitely makes a lot of sense and seems like an approach. That would work across the board by giving smaller grants through the city agencies. That that makes perfect sense. I guess where I'm I'm gonna just uh agree to. I guess where I'm I'm gonna just uh agree to uh be confused uh for a little while is. On the grants that are above the two hundred and fifty thousand threshold that operate through. City agencies for their mission. When they could have just gone through your agency, I guess where I'm a little concerned is just that. If there's a separate process between them going through you versus going through one of the agencies. That, you know, perhaps it's not, you know, that there's not that consistent process that everybody, you know, follows the same thing. And so I know your office is being very, um, you know, is ver- being very thorough. And reviewing every detail to make sure that you're crossing your Ts and dotting your Is and that everything's going to properly qualify. You know, for the federal money to make sure that we're not on the hook for the money, and I appreciate that, I guess. When when you go down to the next level, you know, let's say the health department or wrecked parks and they're going and issuing grants. That are smaller, okay, those are smaller grants, you know, hopefully it all works out, but. When they're issuing grants that are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a million dollars, twelve million dollars. And they're not bound by the exact same process that you guys are using, I guess it just gives a little reservation that. That perhaps, you know, something may be missed and then, you know, we might issue money to an entity that might not be a nonprofit. Or one that's not properly certified and therefore we end up, you know, with with an issue on our hands, so that's 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 where that's where I'll leave it and I'll. Um, and I'll turn it back over to the chair, thank you.
Thank you, councilman, um, I'm just gonna give the administration opportunity to respond if they want, they they're not required to respond. Uh, before I jump over to the next council member.
The last thing I'll say about that is that we also have a risk assessment tool that we share with our city agencies. Um, that they are intended to use as a compliment to, again, with their practical knowledges of boots on the ground and the capacities of those organizations. Um, so I don't know that I would define it as a separate process, we provide them with. The same level of information in terms of risk assessments and the things that they should be collecting from those CBOs um in order to make. Sound decisions and informed decisions on whether those organizations should be granted funds or not. Thank you for that opportunity, Chairman.
Thank you, Director, uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Vice President Middleton. I saw you had your hand raised.
Uh, yes, uh, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, I first of all, just want to say um, thank you for really giving the clarification at the beginning on. Um, how our, how you have basically did the work to declare that our city has been affected. By the pre and post pandemic and and the revenue loss that we have gained. Um, or the revenue loss that we have. Um, most important to me and I'm sure really the whole council is. The delivery of ser- of government services to our constituency and just keeping that in mind. Um, as we move through this whole process, that we need to improve, consistently improve. The delivery of our government services, so my first question, going back to the page that you had up. On your funding commitments. Um, I know that capital expenditures now are part. Of, you know, they can be included, of course, there's certain examples of, you know, capital el- eligibility. But um, I think when you post, start posting stuff, that you should. Put what's eligible for capital expenditures, what's eligible and things like. Um, temporary medical facilities, um behavioral health facilities. I know that affordable housing and permanent supportive housing projects are eligible. I know that improvements to vacant and abandoned properties are eligible, those kind of things. Really need to be posted and it will answer a lot of questions. Of that, you know, when people go on to your website, do you wanna, can you just comment on? Um, things about capital expenditure projects because that was not listed. On your funding commitments and to me, that needs to be a commitment because. That's one of the main problems we're having here, that some of the things that I mentioned are some of the main things we're having. Problems we're having here in our city, can you comment on that?
So I'll note that the slides um are basically recapping the funding commitments that were as of December thirty first, twenty twenty one, as we reported to treasury. Um, there are still uh uncommitted funds that we are still discussing with the mayor and senior leadership. Um, about how they would like to use those funds, so um, this slide was not meant to talk about upcoming or pending commitments or things. That are under consideration by the administration, um certainly there are capital projects that will likely be included. Um, as a part of any future um funding allocations. Um, but again, those are all things that are still being considered and under deliberation and so I would not feel comfortable sharing that at this point. Um, but certainly capital work is is something that we're considering. Um, was there, was there something else that you you mentioned also um? Providing information about capital projects on our website, so let me just note that the interim final rule was very um. Ambiguous around capital expenditures, now, certain things that you mentioned like um health facilities and things like that because ARPA is. Uh, meant to combat a pandemic, certainly those things were enumerated and listed and and discussed in great detail in the interim final rule. The final rule broadened eligibility for capital projects, but also. Um, increased requirements for how we report about them and justifications that are needed for those types of projects. Um, so when we initially, and we did also include on our website, we do have a one pager that we included about capital projects. Um, for anyone who was interested in proposing capital projects. Um, for them to be able to kind of follow those rules and and identify what types of capital projects they were interested in and things like that. So we did have a one pager on our website that talked about that, it did not necessarily speak uh specifically to. Um, or spell out capital projects, but we did provide um a one pager resource for anyone who was proposing. Making proposals and submitting them to us.
Okay, thank you, and then the second question, I know that wa- water and sewer infra- uh infrastructure is. Um, I think certain projects are also under final rule. And um, again, I I I don't know, but I think it's important. Because we are also going through a, you know, cus- consent decree and so on that. Certain additional things need to be posted on what. Is um, what is the new eligibility requirements for water and sewer projects, basically under that final rule?
Okay, um, we, we have an internal summary that we've been working on, again, it's it's a four hundred and thirty seven page document and so we. Um, have created a a summary internally that we can probably turn into some type of. Um, resource that we can add to the website about what's eligible, but what I would also note is that um. Uh, as I'm sure you're aware, Vice President Middleton, the the infrastructure bill has passed and we know that there's going to be some additional funding for. Infrastructure-related activities um that will likely be coming to the state and or city. Um, so I think one thing that we might want to consider or that we've been talking about is balancing how we use ARPA. Because the infrastructure bill is directly for infrastructure-related projects, which would also include broadband water and sewer to some degree. And so we would need to be cautious in thinking about what is the appropriate funding string to use, whether it's ARPA or it's the infrastructure bill.
E- exactly, thank you, I um, I I just want to make made clear that um, I I hope we're included. In those, you know, decision-making processes as we present legislation to. You know, the mayor, the administration, there are things that, you know, these are very important to all of us and. We must come to some mutual agreement as we move through uh and put in. Legislation really that's going to help you and help and help, you know, basically help. The administration and help the entire city, so thank you for your answers, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Councilwoman, uh, I'm just gonna cycle through committee members, um, and then I'll go to noncommittee members, uh, Councilwoman McCray, any questions?
I have no questions, thank you, Mr. Chair, my questions have been answered already.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Stokes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't know if this is for um Director Kearney or C A O uh Shorter. When we talk about uh equity in terms of this amount of money that we have. We now have to get it right, we better do it right, so have we looked at the equity lens because. There are a lot of organizations that we already said on this call, that's that's already doing work. And how we apply equity to these, to the, to this money. But to these organizations is already doing the work who somehow don't don't always get the funding and you always gotta go in their pocket. And the reason I'm asking that question because we're talking about equity for two years. And a lot of city agencies don't have no equity officer, no equity staff, so I'm concerned about. The the equity piece, but making sure these organizations with six hundred and forty one million dollars. Um, get some of this money who actually been doing the work. And how you applying the equity lens to this kind of money and when you giving out these the money to these um nonprofit organizations.
So I I want to be clear that the mayor's office of recovery programs is not responsible for the hiring of equity coordinators across our agencies, but we're certainly. Um, talking with our agencies about how we can apply the equity lens and how we should do so. Uh, so the mayor's office of recovery programs, when we designed our application process, we consider equity at multiple points. Um, and as I've noted in previous testimonies, one of our scoring criteria. Um, is equity and is the highest weight and we ask how will this project incorporate and advance equity? Um, we also have in our communication materials, we make very clear that projects should uh. Projects and services should occur in what are considered qualified census tracts and that those will be given a priority. Also, um, in terms of our applications, once a proposal moves to the application stage. There are three ways that the mayor's office of recovery programs advances equity during this stage. We first ask our applicants to complete an equity assessment. Um, we ask them, ask them to answer questions like, how will the project mitigate or decrease existing or historical disparities? Um, identify that with data and statistics and um also include what population will be served by the project. Uh, we also require for organizations to develop equity-based eligibility or prioritization criteria. Um, to ensure that funds are targeted to groups with the most need, um, an example of that would be in our economic recovery fund. Uh, we ask um that applicants are prioritized that meet some of the following criteria. Uh, the applicant has not received prior funding from a local, state or federal COVID nineteen relief program. Um, that the organization is located in a qualified census tract in Baltimore City. That organizations that provide services um or assistance with food, housing or other basic needs. Um, and uh, who face negative economic impacts from the pandemic. And other organizations that provide disadvantaged groups with access to education, jobs or opportunity. Uh, we also ask for the organization if they employ fifty percent or more um of Baltimore City residents as W two employees. Or that an organization has um twenty or fewer full-time employees. Um, lastly, I'll just note that we require our organizations to develop performance measures. Um, and then we specify whether they're able to disaggregate that information. Uh, by demographic characteristics, so that will include age, gender, race, ethnicity, zip code, um to the extent that we are able to get that information. Uh, with regard to any projects that are funded, we require our funded organizations to break down specific performance measures, again, by demographic characteristics. Um, and we will try to include that as a part of our monthly and quarterly reporting. Um, I'll lastly just mention that we're also working with our university partners, the University of Baltimore. Um, to develop an approach to linking funds spent to specific zip codes and neighborhoods. So that again, when this funding is spent, we are able to identify how much money was spent in different neighborhoods, now again. Um, that is longer tail, that is not something that we can tell you right now, but that is a goal uh for the mayor's office of recovery programs and for the administration. To link investments to neighborhoods.
Uh, thank you, Director Kearney, is that actually available to online or? Uh, Mr. Chair, can we request that that information for the committee, just to have those type of questions, I didn't know.
Let's go to the director first to see if that's online.
Okay.
What are, what are you asking to be requested, are you, are you, I'm sorry, what are you asking to be?
The requi- the questions uh y'all ask of those uh nonprofits is that something that's already listed that committee can have?
It is a part of our, it is a part of the application and the risk assessment, but we can certainly compile that into one document.
Okay. Councilman, let me jump in just to make sure I I clarify so we get your request correct. Um, you're looking for the list of questions that um Director Kearney's office. Is asking of applicants to discuss their their concepts, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Director, does that make sense?
Yep, I got it, thank you.
Thank you, yes, that's my only question, thank you, Director Kearney.
And Director, I I'm assuming that that information is is readily available and it's just a matter of cutting. Cutting and pasting from a few documents into one new document?
Yes, the the questions you're referencing, yes, we can do that.
Would it be reasonable to uh include that on the request that we sent to you over the weekend? For the written responses that are due on on this Friday at C O B?
Um, that's fine, we can do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not creating more work here, though, that's, it's all readily available, is what I'm hearing, okay, perfect. All right, Councilman Stokes, you good?
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Burnett?
I don't have any question, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter? Oh, Councilwoman Porter's gone, Councilwoman Ramos?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you uh everyone for your great work, um, I have a cup- few questions. Um, I will take responsibility for being the councilperson, asking for the whole list um ahead of time. So that we can see all of the projects, um, I was also hoping to see the city uh agency projects. Now, I know a lot of our agencies actually, well, some of our agencies have posted or at least have. Talked about some of the things that in there ARPA asks, but it was my understanding that our endorsements. Would be used for both city agencies and nonprofits, so I think that the list that needs to be given to us is the full list. Is that possible?
So to clarify, I said that I would provide the list of all nonprofits because the application portal doesn't close to um to city agencies until March thirty first.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So you can get all of them, but um, because the uh the portal doesn't close to the thirty first, you wouldn't have all of the city agency proposals.
Director, let me, let me jump in here, Councilwoman, make sure I understand, your request is for the list of just nonprofit. Um, uh, concepts, correct?
No, my request has been the list of nonprofits and city agency proposals so that we can. Properly.
Understood, no, no, I got you, um, okay, so we got two different buckets here, we've got the list of of the nonprofit. So that that would include the nonprofit, the name of the organization, the amount and.
Yeah, a description of what they're doing, yeah, yeah.
Some type of short description, that's one half of the request, the other piece of the request is the agencies. So Director, can you talk through um what you're able to provide at this time, recognizing that that is a a dynamic list?
Sure, I can.
Mr. Chair, just let me, in the slide that that the um, the director showed. They're they're first going through all the final rule, everything else, and then they're going to be giving us that list, so it's not a list that needs to be done tomorrow. It's part of that process that she outlined. And so that in March at some point, we should be getting the list for nonprofits and my hope was to be able to get. The list and the description of the projects for the agencies, but it sounds like that won't be possible until after. The director does her investigation to make sure that all the agency proposals fit with the eligibility criteria, am I correct?
No, you're not, we um are evaluating all the proposals that we have to date. Um, that also includes agency proposals.
Okay.
Uh, however, there may be some additional agencies that provide proposals, uh, because the application portal does not close until. March the thirty first to city agencies, so what we can provide is whatever we've we've uh. What whatever has been submitted by agencies as of the date, that we provide everything from the nonprofits as well.
Thank you.
Or we can hold the list an additional week or so. To um, see how many additional city agency proposals we receive and then add that to the list. Now, based on the the emails that I get and the phone calls that I get, there seems to be um a sense of urgency around. Nonprofit proposals, which is why I was going to separate the list out, but still provide the agency uh proposals as well. But all of the calls and inquiries that I. But all of the calls and inquiries that I get are around the nonprofit one. So I wanted to try to be responsive as best I could.
I appreciate that and and um, so I think that makes sense to to split it that way. Um, I wonder if we can then sort of figure out if our ten endorsements. Because our ten endorsements have to be split between all of them, is my understanding. And maybe we can work with you, uh, we don't have to solve this today, but to work with you to say, well, maybe we get, you know, five for the agencies and ten for the nonprofits, right? So that at least we have um a, you know, I I certainly understand the urgency. I know we've got several nonprofits that are interested to know what's going on. I totally get it and I don't want to slow that up anymore. Uh, but I I just want to be able to have a full picture. So maybe we can discuss whether or not we get, you know, certain endorsements for city and certain endorsements for um the the nonprofits, and I would appreciate that that discussion. Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to be clear that I don't need this list tomorrow. It was part of the process that we had been given. And I do appreciate, Director Kearney, that you actually included it in your process. So I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
No need to apologize. People interrupt me all day long. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Um, and then my next question um is um, I noticed that the um health department hasn't um spent any money yet. Um, and if you could talk through that, um, considering that they're doing a Herculean effort to keep us safe. Um, are they using like CARES Act money first? Is there like a sequencing? Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. Um, so the mayor's office of recovery programs as well as finance uh directed that the FEMA reimbursement should continue to cover as many of the B H B C H Ds allowable COVID nineteen expenses as possible um until the deadline, which is April first, twenty twenty two. Um, unless we find out that FEMA is going to extend the the ability to use cares beyond April first, twenty twenty two. Um, so those expenditures that are available to be reimbursed through cares are vaccine, vaccine outreach, PPE procurement, testing, um food and security efforts, things of that nature. Um, however, with regard to the ARPA funding, B C H D has begun the hiring and recruiting process for ARPA funded positions for contract tracing and outbreak investigation um and some other operations support personnel. Um, but I'll note, uh, which I also include on the slides, that obviously we have some delays with expenditures being posted. Um, so you probably won't see um any expenditures against ARPA for the health department until which time that they hire and actually begin to start to pay personnel. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman?
Yeah, so um, the, yes, thank you. So just to follow up, if that's okay, the um, uh, we're uh, hopefully, um, we are coming to some sort of an end here. But normal, but recognizing, and it sounds like the health department is sort of planning for this, recognizing that we're still going to have waves for a few more years. And so that's, it sounds like that's what they will be using the ARPA money for is for that, like holiday time wave, make sure we have enough test sites and all of that kind of stuff. Is that accurate?
Uh, I I believe so because their budget is through uh fiscal year twenty five. So they are accounting for COVID related concerns or expenses um until that time, at which point uh the funding would end.
So what happens um if um we're good, we don't, the virus isn't lasting till twenty twenty five. Would they be to able to recalibrate their proposal or how does that, you know, how does that work?
So we would probably have to have some discussions because the the intent of of the law is to be responsive to the COVID nineteen health pandemic. Uh, and so if there were things that were not going to be related to COVID nineteen, then we would have to discuss how the health department would be able to use those funds or if we would have to reallocate those funds for another purpose.
I'm not, I mean, I think we're gonna have this for a while, so I I'm not, I just was curious.
Right.
To be clear, if I can also jump in uh with with something that I think is also responsive, Councilwoman. Uh, it's important to also consider, and I do want to make sure that health has an opportunity to follow up. So I want to kind of reserve the ability that they may want to add uh to this uh post hearing uh with with something in writing. If we do not have additional surges uh and or increases in positivity over the next few years. There is still a a need for us to make sure that we have the capacity. Uh, and the health department is going to be working extremely hard on this, have the capacity to deal with any um health related emergency. And that is important uh for a number of reasons. And so what you will see by way of contact, either hiring of contact tracers, the investments in information uh health related information technology systems, just again, building the capacity within our health department um, won't necessarily depend on the city's uh sort of uh a future surge um over the next few years related uh only to Omicron or other variants of of COVID. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that the health department will be spending funds specifically related to capacity. And that capacity will be needed um as health departments, public health in general, in systems around the country for big cities are evolving uh in in preparation for what might come next year, the year after, or in future years. And so I just want to make sure that that I made that point uh because it's important uh to recognize that the funding won't only and spending won't only be attached to holiday surges. And and so these investments in infrastructure, these investments in technology, the investments in contact tracers and other staff that will be hired uh will be extremely important as well.
Thank you. I I appreciate that and I certainly agree. Um, but knowing that the funding is going to be ending, you know, we would have then have to find another funding source for those after that. And the health department is already eighty percent grant funded. So um, you know, that that's just something that we probably want to think about moving forward. But I'm glad that the health department will be prepared in the future for um whatever, whatever greets us. We just want to make sure that that's then sustainable. Uh, I have a couple other questions, Mr. Chair, but I'm happy to yield to other members.
Thank you. Um, Director, can you please give a brief overview of the um staffing of the ARPA office? I know we have a new deputy director.
Yes, um, we have, uh, we are budgeted for um ten F T E. There are currently uh eight that are filled. Uh, that is the deputy director, um, one program manager, a project compliance officer, a community engagement specialist, a uh accountant as well as a budget analyst. And so we are looking to hire two additional project managers to assist us with uh what we anticipate will be um the management or the need of, once we start to award nonprofit organizations, to be able to appropriately monitor.
Um, what is the status of of those efforts to bring those two additional uh individuals on board and be fully staffed?
So we just posted in January, I believe, and so we've gone through um our first round of applications. Um, and we'll be looking to do some interviews. Uh, we did a couple last week and we'll be looking to do some additional interviews over the next a couple of weeks.
And the, I'm assuming the goal is to have them onboard, on boarded by end of March in order to to kind of dive into that second round of review of the nonprofit act?
Tomorrow if I could, but we don't move that fast.
Understood. Thank you. Um, Director, can you talk about? And I guess, let me start with C A O shorter in case he wants to chime in first. Can we talk about the uh administration's plans um to comply with uh Council Bill twenty one dash zero one two one, American Rescue Plan Funds Performance Oversight? And that was legislation which was enacted into law uh February tenth.
You said you want to start with C A O shorter? Okay.
Yeah, I'll just defer to him. This is more administration law.
I yield to the director uh in terms of oversight.
Great. Uh, so, um, Chairman, as you know, the Recovery Office offered um a series of amendments to the legislation to um ensure our ability to provide um reliable data. Um, those amendments were not accepted and um we have the the current bill as it stands. Um, the required reports are due on a different cadence in our treasury reporting. Um, and generally require require the same staff at the agency level to spend time collecting and aggregating data um for both the council requirement as well as the treasury requirement. Um, and that takes their time away from implementing ARPA funded programs and initiatives. Uh, we're still coordinating with agencies to determine what data is available on a monthly basis, and that's responsive to the legislation. Um, there are some things, quite honestly, that I'm a little challenged by. Uh, for example, I I don't know of a data source that would provide information on a monthly basis uh for population growth. And so we'll have to figure out what, if anything, that we're doing actually um addresses that. Um, there are other things about broadening the reach of government. Um, not sure what measures we would use to to the, to be able to indicate that. But we are certainly working with agencies um to identify what would be responsive to the legislation. So we fully intend to comply. Um, we just need uh to have some additional conversations with our agencies around what's doable and what's reliable. Uh-oh, the Count, Chairman, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Again, two years in, you think I would know where the mute button is? Um, we are going to take a three minute recess. Uh, we will be back at eleven forty eight AM promptly. Thank you. All right, we're back in session. Thank you all for your patience. Um. Everyone could turn their cameras back on, please, and thanks, panelists. Okay, um, I wanted to jump into um the fifty million dollar announcement with respect to MONC. Uh, I know there were two communications of it. Uh, the first one was kind of the general announcement, and then there was a second announcement which took one of the categories of fifty million dollars and broke that down into different nonprofit organizations. Um, Nina, I I believe you have um the announcement or a spreadsheet with the list of those organizations and the amounts of funding. Can you, can you pull that up and share that on the screen?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You wanted the email portion that has the funding amounts because there's a separate P D app that only has the background information for the organizations.
Um, I I think the email with the funding amounts. I don't know that we're going to get into too much detail on it, uh, but I just want to frame the concern for my colleagues and and give the administration an opportunity to, yeah, yeah, yep, that's the table. So this announcement went out, when did this go out, Nina? About a month ago, maybe?
I believe it was January the twenty eighth.
Okay, two and a half weeks ago. All right, so the administration makes an announcement, fifty million dollars for MONC. It's split up into seven or eight some odd buckets. One of those buckets deals with this, and then this is announced, which is um, uh, a combination of some partnerships with other government agencies. I had referenced the the Department of Public Safety and Corrections uh uh line item. I mistakenly said twelve point three million. It looks like twelve point seven million. Um. My line of questioning is around nonprofit organizations that are identified in this table. Um, how those were selected and why those nonprofit organizations are not going through the process that has been established uh for nonprofits in general.
So what I would say is that um the mayor's office of recovery programs was responsible for um working with city agencies to identify their program design and how much funding will be needed to execute their programs. Uh, MONC has elected to use some of its funds to award community based organizations directly to help execute with uh their program design and and to help meet the goals of the use of ARPA funding. Uh, for their process, I don't know that it was necessarily much different than than ours. Um, I know that they also have a review process. I know that they're also scrutinizing organizations around risk. Um, so I I don't necessarily know that I agree that there are different processes per se. Um, what I would say is that that our threshold was higher um than what was requested of some C B Os that might be working with uh with our city agencies.
So to make sure I understand, Director, we have the citywide process for nonprofits that are interested in in um, um. Let me take a step back. We have a process, a citywide process which is managed through your office to um uh review proposals from nonprofits and award grants based on certain criteria as well as a rubric, as well as your staff review, as well as the advisors that that you are deploying to assist in in articulating these proposals and getting them from from kind of proposal or concept to actual application with with specific agreements. So you've got this this very in-depth process that's laid out citywide. Then we have a specific city agency which is going through a different process and not the process that you've laid out. Is that, is that correct or am I mischaracterizing?
Um, they are not applying directly to the mayor's office of recovery programs. They are applying um to agency for funding is the distinction that I would make.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't want to single out anyone, so let's just, I'm gonna, I see the first seven, so I'm gonna, I see the first eight. So I'm just gonna say whatever line item number nine is because I can't, we can't see that. Um, please don't show me. Okay, you showed me. That's fine. Um, so line item number twelve on this list. Um, what is, do we know what the process is? How how was the determination made that line item number ten, twelve should receive this funding through MONC? Did they, did that organization go through some type of um uh bidding or award process or was a determination just made by MONC or by the administration? Who made that decision and and how and why?
If I could uh jump in and Director Kearney, please feel free to sort of add to uh what I'm about to say or correct if if I say something that's not quite right. Um, as was mentioned earlier, um, recovery uh programs is really interested in making sure that the facilitation of these funds uh is according to the treasury, U S Treasury's guidelines. And that we are ultimately in putting ourselves in a position post ARPA uh to withstand any an audits uh and and make sure that we come off those audits with a clean bill. And do not put ourselves in a position where where we don't have the appropriate paperwork, documentation, and are not selecting organizations um to receive this money appropriately. That said, um, what we talked about earlier is the fact that the Recovery Office is no, is they are not in a position uh to, in terms of the uh the community work that needs to be done by way of violence prevention. They are not in a position to evaluate the efficacy of community based organizations. What is required, they are ensuring happens. And so uh where there are agencies that will do considerable work with community based organizations in order to to actually get uh these funds spent and make the impact that they have committed to making. Uh, we are just making sure via recovery that the appropriate documentation by way of selection, uh that the spending uh is in line with the commitments made in the proposal, the application. Um, so, but for the questions related to how MONC is selecting organizations, how they're evaluating those organizations' effectiveness and how payments are being made. We could, you could certainly follow up or ask that MONC uh have a representative on the, on the hearing the next time we are together to answer more detailed questions about uh about their awards.
Thank you, Mr. C A O. So so let me um, let me summarize and and put a few words in your mouth based on what I heard. Just you let me know if this is, this is accurate. So we have an agency, in this case, MONC, which um is going to need to do work with community-based organizations to fulfill its, its mission specifically related to the expenditure of, of ARPA funding. Obviously, that's why this list is, is in front of us. The, the role of Director Kearney's team in this is to make sure, is to ensure that the agency understands the, the criteria and the limitations on what they can spend the money on and what they can't to ensure compliance with, with the law. That's, that's the first piece. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. Thank you.
Okay, and then this is where I'm kind of putting words in your mouth just to make, make sure I understand it. So correct me if I'm wrong. The, the agency in this case, MONC, theoretically has reviewed the, the guidance from Director Kearney's office and is making a determination that the following, this list of things here are things that are necessary for its work and they are making a determination that dispersment of the funds in the manner that's outlined in this table, along with the additional detail, is consistent with the letter of the law, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then we, you're suggesting that we, that we have a representative of MONC speak to the process by which these, the, the, this list of things was determined, this list of line items, because Director Kearney and her team wouldn't necessarily have insight at, at this level of detail within an agency's request. Is that correct?
Mostly, what I would add to that is just that the actual program itself, so on this list, neighborhood stabilization response, gun violence in survivor, survivor wraparound services, a harm reduction and addiction, and addiction grant. These things were likely included in the application itself. So there is some line of sight and we have intelligence around the fact that this kind of work will be done. What I'm saying is that the organizations that MONC has decided to partner with to get the work done is not, that, that process is not a process that the recovery office would have been involved in. What we will look for is is the appropriate documentation, ensuring that the organization, the organization selected to do this work were appropriately selected and that the, and that the milestones that were committed to as part of the application process, that those milestones are being met. So it is going to be up to, I think it is appropriate for MONC to have a representative to, to speak to, to the, the detail of the capability of these community-based organizations, how they were selected. Because the recovery office may not be, may not be in the best position to do so.
Understood, and just one point of clarification, CAO Shorter, you mentioned the, the application about a minute and a half ago, you're referring to the agencies, the, the agency of MONC, their application to the recovery office and their application, I assume was for fifty million dollars to do various activities, some of which are covered in this spreadsheet, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, you're referring to, to the agency application. Okay, so so the, I think I, I fully understand here. So what, what I'm, what I'm asking for is, is for a representative of MONC to help me, help me, help guide me on my question here. What I'm asking for, I want a representative from MONC to explain to me how this list was determined, what was the process, and, and how we're ensuring that these line items here are consistent with the letter of the law so that we're complying with, with federal rules and regs and the law and all that, correct? Does that sound appropriate?
I think so. Based on the questions you've asked, I think the, the, the guidance that I would give to the MONC representative who comes, who joins us the next time we're all together at the next quarterly hearing will be to be prepared to make sure that we, that they are able to speak to the, the, the specific organizations that have been selected, their capability, how they were selected, and if there is an update on impact at that point, to be prepared to talk about impact. I think based on, again, the questions that you've asked, that would probably be the best guidance for, for them.
Um, yeah, I thi- I think that sounds right. Nina, can you please take down the, um, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I think that sounds right. And kind of the, the second set of questions slash concerns that have been raised from, from my end as we've talked through this over the past few minutes is that we have this citywide process for nonprofits to apply, but it sounds like nonprofits can either apply through that or they can work directly, or they may have already worked directly with an agency, or they could be in the process because that period closes March thirty first. So nonprofits could theoretically be working through two different channels. One is the citywide nonprofit process. Two is specifically through an agency that they would like to partner with. Is that correct?
It is correct generally. What I'll say for many of the organizations that MONC is working with, a, an agency that's doing community work, that's in a position to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not common. And so MONC is working with organizations, I, you know, in that doc, in that email that was up, I don't, I did not see numbers in terms of what those contracts or agreements are worth. But I would, it is highly likely that they are, that they are not spending fifty, sixty, a hundred thousand dollars. Certainly nowhere near the two hundred and fifty K that it would take to work directly with recovery. So it is possible, but not, but not likely that organizations are pursuing both paths right now. So.
That's, that's helpful and that, that context makes sense. So Director, I know that you're working on a citywide list per Councilwoman Ramos's request. Can I ask you to prioritize a quick check on the organizations that are in that announcement? Nina, if you could please send that forward, that email to Director Kearney, I'm sure she's seen it, but just to bump it up in her inbox.
I have it, and I do, and just, just also to be clear, for all of the proposals that are in, and, and again, just using MONC as an example, because that's what we're discussing. For all the proposals that have anything to do with violence prevention or any of the lanes in which MONC has expertise, we are sharing those proposals with MONC to understand if this is an organization who has already reached out, who has applied directly to MONC or is already doing work with MONC. So we do have those communication channels established, but certainly we will provide this, a cross checklist to you. And I guess your, your question is if these same organizations have also applied to the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. Is that to ask?
Yeah, so if you could do a, a check, if, if any of these organizations have applied through, through your citywide process that you've developed, Director, if you could, if you could send me those applications, that's the first piece, and, and then, that's the only piece. Sorry, I misspoke. I will state for the record that while we're on the topic, although it's not necessarily germane to this, that I, I do have concerns about the expansion of the scope of, of the MONC office and the rate at which that has expanded, but that's a conversation for another day and time in a different forum, and I don't know that, Director Kearney, you are, are necessarily need to be a part of that conversation, but I do just want to raise that for the record and we can have that conversation. I look forward to, to having that conversation in partnership with the administration at, at a, at a later date. Director, what do you feel is a reasonable timeframe to provide, you know, a zip file with, with those applications of, of that list of orgs that have applied through your process?
I will shoot for Monday with the rest of the responses to the, I'm sorry, to Friday, with the rest of the responses to the written questions that were submitted.
Thank, thank you so much. Appreciate your and, and CAO Shorter's, is kind of work through the thought process behind what the request is there. Appreciate that. Let's cycle back through Councilman Schleifer. Council Vice President Middleton.
No ques- no further questions at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Stokes.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey. Councilwoman Ramos, thank you.
Mr. Chair, yes, I have one last question. And I appreciate your indulgence. Thanks again. I want to go back to the, the revenue loss piece. The ninety six point three million, that's strictly revenue loss, or does that also include spending that we had to do in the emergency situation? That brought then the, the, the funds that we had down.
Just one correction, it's ninety three point six million and
Excuse me, I reversed it in my notes, sorry.
And if Pedro is still on, I think it would be more appropriate or, or anyone from Finance BBMR to, to speak to the calculation. And what was included?
Unfortunately, Pedro lost power, and so not on right now. So if it's possible, Councilmember Ramos, for us to get that back to you offline. I don't have the details of how that calculation was done, unfortunately.
Sure, and I think that the rest of the committee would be interested as well, so if you can send that over, that would be great.
And related Mother Ramos, can I just clarify what your question is again? The, the question is if the ninety three point six million includes spending?
Correct, like emergency spending. So we had a revenue loss, right? But then we also had to house people, we had to spend money on a lot of other things, and then that brought the fact that we had, you know, not as much money to play with for the budget as a result, right? So I'm just trying to figure out the math, that's all.
Got it, thank you.
And then related to that, given that the final rule has allowed for revenue loss spending, one of the issues that my colleagues have brought up in, in other hearings and that we've been hearing time again is to be able to use this money to bring city services back to where they should be, if not better, as a result of this funding. So with the, the, the money that can be now used for revenue loss, because once you get the numbers for the FY twenty one, then, you know, does that then supplement the, what, what needs to happen with the agencies? I mean, we can rattle off the agencies that have had issues because of COVID and, and need to be back to where they, they need to be and, and could use money to do that.
I don't know, CAO Shorter, want to jump in here or not?
Sure, ha- happy to. It's a very important question. Councilwoman, appreciate you asking it. I know that it has certainly come up in, in this forum, but on one-on-one discussions as well. As, just as a reminder, government agencies, our agencies are still submitting proposals and will continue to do so through March thirty first. That said, we have a considerable number of agencies who have already not just submitted proposals gone through the application process, but are well on their way in terms of implementation. So the answer to your question is yes, we have, for example, tomorrow, tomorrow, you will see fifteen mini packers, what we refer to as refuse trucks, making their way through BOE. This will, this, this will give us a capacity around illegal dumping and bulk trash. Currently, we are picking up, our crews are picking up in some cases these materials in, in, in trucks that are not suitable. And so we are purchasing these fifteen pack, mini packers to, to make sure that the length of time that our crews can be out collecting is extended. We are also funding a route optimization software. This will tell us digitally where we are picking up, where we are not, and put us in a much better position as a city to, to be able to work on behalf of residents as it relates to, to routine services. We are, we are working with agencies around a clean core, that is to say, a, a building up of community-based organizations to help in the process of cleaning the illegal dumping, loose litter and other trash around our city. Those are just examples. There are many more. The, 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 the answer to your question is yes, we are absolutely where possible, going to be leveraging these resources. It is absolutely eligible to do, to do what we can to clear the backlog. At the last hearing, the committee requested information on the actual backlog. We provided that information back to twenty fourteen, I believe, and, and we plan to use that information to help us in, in the, in the investment, strategic investments we're making in agencies so that they could do the work. So yes, again, the answer to your question is we will be leveraging these resources to help provide for better and more efficient government operations that is in real time, but also investing strategically in the information technology systems and equipment and fleet and personnel that will last us much further than the ARPA investment. So that's, I'll stop there and, and thank you again for asking questions.
Thank you. Just a clarifying question then, so this, this sort of the new rule, the final rule that talks about this, you know, filling in for revenue loss, is that now a new sort of filter in which, or a framework in which the agencies that still are asking for their ARPA are going? Or is it just, we told them initially, send us what you really need because we want you to be back up to capacity? And, and the final rule just sort of allows us to, reinforces that. It, it's not going to be extra money, but it reinforces the, the work that you wanted them to do anyway. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and I'd say the latter. We, we, we had already provided guidance to agencies that they could and should be submitting these kinds of ideas, of proposals, and the final rule helps us in that process. It, it doesn't contradict anything that had already been shared and does not restrict our ability to actually use the funds in this way. So we are, we are continuing to move in the same direction we have been moving for the last few months by way of guidance to agents.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. CAO Shorter, Director Kearney, anything you want to add before we go into recess?
I know nothing additional, other than if we have any challenges with aggregating any of the information that's been requested, we'll certainly be in touch. I don't anticipate that being a problem, but we'll keep the lines of communication open around that.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. Really appreciate your time and attention to this and look forward to one, seeing you at the next quarterly, and to the written responses this week. Thank you very much. We are now in recess.
Thank you.